Thank you all for coming. Tonight, for the Wareham Zoning Board Appeal for tonight, Wednesday, January 22, 2025, at 6:30 PM. And we are at the Multi Service Center at Room 520, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. Also, we have Zoom. Whoever wish to be on Zoom. I want to call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far right, Mr. Troy Larsson. Our clerk, Mr. Jim Acapachi. My left, Mr. Richard Temple, Associate Member, Mr. Christopher Conti. And I also want to welcome a new Associate Member, Connor Alden. Welcome, Connor. Also present, our Commissioner, Mr. Paul Turner, our Town Planner, Mr. Josh Flattery, and Department Assistant, Mrs. Raposo. We're going to start by meeting approvals for January 8, 2025.
I've read the minutes, and I move that we approve them as presented.
I second it.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the minutes by Chris, second by Jim. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye.
There isn't a signature line on here, but I'm going to sign it. If they need, I can go into the office. If they want to make a final page, I can read it.
Yeah, sure. We're going to go to 4-23 True Storage, JALLC 2400, Cranberry Highway. The final SPR completion approval. Anyone here from them?
I have one online, and I'll let them in there.
Okay.
This is True Storage? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
That's correct.
I was not listening while you were talking.
You should have a peer review and plans in the front of your folders.
I got it.
Yeah. Hi, my name's Tom Remus. I'm on the Zoom call. I'm here for True Storage.
Okay. I believe you had a occupancy permit. You have few things to finish. Have you guys finished these things that were hanging?
Everything for the building has been completed. All the inspections are completed. Everything has passed. There are a few landscape items that still need to be completed, but due to the weather, we were unable to plant some of the trees.
Okay. So you still have landscape and not done?
There's a few trees that need to be planted, yes.
Okay.
Is it normal, once everything, once the applicant says completed, that we send the peer engineer back out one more time?
He did. Yeah, but...
But if it's not complete, you know, I guess I'm going to, I'm leaning towards saying, let's just continue it until we know that everything's done.
How long the occupancy commissioner is good for?
I gave them a full occupancy. At the time, the decision letter doesn't specify that.
Just in as built.
Right. It just said as built required.
All right. We're gonna, what's your name, sir?
It's Tom Remus.
Tom. We're going to ask you to come back before us, let's say, beginning of July. Make sure everything is planted. We'll call our consultant, make sure everything in order. So we're going to take your word that you're going to put everything in place by then. Is that a good time? A good enough time for you?
Yeah. We would probably actually request to have even sooner than that. So as soon as the weather permits, whether it's April or May, we'll be planting the trees. And then I'll have a request to come back in front of the board.
Yeah, that's even better. The minute you finish and just request to come before us, and we'll put it to bed. Very good?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Any comments from the board on that? Are we all on the same page?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
We don't have to move out any decision time on the end of it, right?
No.
We're all good?
We're all good. Don't even, we don't even need a motion, so...
We do or we don't.
Yeah, let's do a motion.
Okay. So I make a motion to approve and bring this applicant back in June or before for a final review of the punch list here.
Okay. Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Rich. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. It carries. Continue public hearing, 21-23 Angela McEwen, reconsideration for 386 Main Street. All right, Counselor?
Good evening.
Yes, I believe that public hearing's still open.
If there's anything new here, you want the pre-existing?
So it's still open. Where did we leave it last time?
There's no batch of stuff to hand out.
That's okay.
There were a couple of continuances because of scheduling and everything. So I'll just do a quick recap. Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street. What's in front of you is a reconsideration on the application 386, 388 Main Street, or variance in site plan review. There was an unfavorable decision, three saying yes, two abstaining. And we went through the process. Planning Board agreed with us that there was a substantial change, being that we purchased 1/6 of the property. So now, in front of you, looking for the reconsideration of approval of this project. If you recall, this went through full site plan review. And just to refresh your memory, when it was voted on, particularly quoting the minutes, that the reason for the two abstaining was due to the gray area regarding the easement. So now, we're in a position where I think it's time that we just go through a little bit in regards to the easement and just discuss where we're at. I know we have opposition on this project. The opposition's arguments are citing case law, which I went through. I want to refresh your memory that the deed and the particular easement language that we have within the deed is talking about that we have a 20-foot right-of-way leading from High Street to Bump Homestead, so-called, and to its various subdivisions. It's very key that that language is within the deeds, that that was contemplated. It's our argument that, at the time of the creation, the idea is that it didn't limit the density there. If you recall, this project, we actually could build 14 in one building. But what we're looking for is variances for separate buildings. We believe that that fits in better with the nature of the neighborhood, considering other projects that are even on this street. Another piece of the puzzle that I haven't seen demonstrated from opposition is any damage. So the cases that they're citing are dealing with waterways. So someone's blocking a right-of-way to the water. They built a dock. Or they're building a bridge. What we're asking for is to pave the driveway and to make it usable. We've tried to work with the abutters in regards to doing some sort of road maintenance agreement. I don't think that there's damage here. I think it's only going to improve their property. What we're looking to do is have this project approved because of the change, where now we have 1/6 ownership. The case laws have shown that, in this area in general, this is a village. This is a high-density area. I think that you would look at everything around it. If you look at an aerial on the GIS map, this is a huge piece of property. All the other ones are cut up quite small or have multiple units on it, like three or four or five or 10. So as far as the overburdening of it, the case laws support that the amount of use, the intensity, and so the vehicles themselves, that's not an argument for overuse. So we're looking for the approval. I think this has gone on a long time. I know everyone has their own opinions regarding it. But frankly, we're just trying to improve the neighborhood. If you recall, we paid off the taxes. We're going through the area and trying to get this other 1/6. We're dealing with a probate in Maine, so it's just taking a little while. So I think you guys have all the information that you need to make your decision.
I understand. Is the rebuttal attorney is here?
He's on Zoom. He came last time.
All right.
I believe he's on Zoom.
But I believe last time we left, not last time, before, a few months ago, that you, both of you come in agreement about the easement.
Oh, I'm happy to discuss that. So what happened was, is we were trying to look to see if we could come off of Main Street. I know that for them and the abutters, they've actually said on record that they would have no opposition if our main entrance was on Main Street. So we seriously took a look at that again. I know we already did that in their initial site plan review and spent money on the engineering. But unfortunately, we couldn't get the curb cut. In my letter to you, Dave Andrade, they got denied. And also, we have a letter from the planning office in regards to the danger in line of sight. So there's no way we can go off of Main Street. So that should be in your packets where you can see. The planning office wrote a letter in regards to that.
So DPW denied your access?
We're denied.
Based on what?
They said because of the actual steepness. It's actually the highest point over there. So we tried. We tried to go the other way. We understand that there's fierce opposition, but it actually would be very detrimental, the amount of cars that go on that road and the plaza. So I think we've exhausted that avenue.
And how wide is the easement?
20, 20 feet.
Do you have any information? Our normal subdivision roads, how wide should they be for 10? How many units you doing 10?
10. Everything, if you recall, in the site plan review, the police, I mean, the police, the fire department approved our length. That's why they want it. They want it 20 feet. So the fire truck could get in there, and they didn't have a problem. I believe we have a letter in there from Captain Smith. So there wasn't any opposition from any of the other departments.
Okay. But what I'm saying, if we are to do a subdivision today with 10 units, what's the minimum of a road? George, is it 22 feet?
Give me a second. I'll pull it up.
All right. I want to...
This isn't a subdivision.
I understand, but the impact of the units. Okay. Why don't we listen to the rebuttal attorney, and then we start with the board? Counselor, are you there?
What is her name?
Silverstein.
Maybe he could raise his hand for John.
John Silverstein. I do not see John Silverstein.
Is he, he's on or he's not?
I don't see his head.
He's not on Zoom yet?
Is the abutters here? Do you want to give your attorney a call to go online? While you're doing this, you go outside, call them. I start with questions by Troy. What do you think of that matter?
I think it's to the point where we should just move forward.
Move forward because we're exhausted? Because we think it's right? Because we think it's wrong? Because why?
Well, because I think, based on everything that I've heard, they do have the right to do what they want to do.
Okay. So you believe on 1/6 of this, you believe you could use it of the right-of-way? Okay. Jimmy?
A prior vote was three in favor and two abstaining of five members. I was one of the in-favor voters. I was not an abstainer. I would continue to vote in favor.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, he just joined. I just...
Okay. All right. Just let him listen until we're done. Richard, what do you think?
I want the project to go forward also, but I also have some concerns. I don't know what the past history of that easement was, if people have been paying, sharing, putting monies out. I don't know where they stand as far as that. Are they being compensated? I have issues about, just want to clarify that whole entryway. I still don't feel like the people that have been living there their whole life is getting a fair shake, in my opinion.
That's complicated, for sure. Chris?
At one point, were they thinking of getting like a third of the right-of-way? I thought there was some question about that, a sixth or a third.
I mean, a third, a sixth, a fifth.
So...
If I may, the way I see it, it's going to end up in court. And let them sort it out with a judge. Whatever we say, it's not going to make a difference the way we see it. It's a little complicated how a judge is going to see it. We don't know how he's going to see it.
I'd love to add one thing that may be helpful in regards to ownership of that actual T parcel. Imagine we owned none of it, too. So the Bump Homestead, where we are, is the dominant estate. So we're able to, it was the one that granted out those two. So we actually, it's not like, it doesn't matter what ownership we have. You know, it's certainly helpful in the fact that we paid the taxes. So, and the other 1/6, we are going. We're just in a probate in Maine. So it takes a little extra time.
The right of using, there's no question asked. You have the right of using, to use what you're using. The question is to be asked if you overburden it. And this is not a question for us to be asking. So we'll do what we think is right, and you guys are going to have to take it from there. Counselor, are you there? Counselor?
I am here, yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, Jonathan Silverstein for the abutters. So, Mr. Chair, I couldn't agree with you more. You should do what you think is right. I guess the question is, do you think it's right to force on two families who have owned their single-family residences on a single-family residential street, that a 20-foot paved access road to a large multifamily development over what historically has been an eight-to-10-foot gravel driveway that serves their, you know, three residences? And I don't think anyone would say that that's right, that that's fair. You don't have to get to the property rights issue, though I think you should. That is just, it's not right. These are two families who have contributed to the town, lived in the town, raised families in the town. Why would you impose that burden on them when this property has direct access onto Main Street? And you could approve this application, but not allow them to put in this huge access road across the front yards of these two families? But why would you approve something that you know is going to cause years of litigation, burden the town, and my clients, and the applicant with the expense of that litigation? All for what? For approving an application that, I know you don't want to get into it, but they clearly do not satisfy the requirements for a variance, and they have direct access onto Main Street? And if you look at the case, the Brady case that I cited in my letter, it says that if someone is proposing a permanent improvement to property that they own as tenants in common with others, that it shouldn't be approved. That was a deck, a wooden deck. This is a 20-foot paved access road that's going to pave over the front yards of my client's home. So I would just, I would implore the board, think about my clients, about what they would be living with, and about the fact that this is not necessary. The applicant might have a preference to use this rather than their frontage, but that's not a necessity. And respectfully, easement rights merge and are terminated when there's common ownership with the fee. So if they're claiming they have fee interest in the T-shaped parcel, they no longer have easement rights.
Okay. Well, we had a point right now in this matter. Being fair and being kind, it's not on the table. It's becoming more of a legal question. Whether we think it's fair, it's not fair to the neighbors. All these fairness questions right now, it's not coming to play after that long time. It's all legal. My question to you, Counselor, your client's address is High Street, correct? Am I correct?
Yes.
So they do have access to High Street. So easily, they could have a curb cut from High Street and don't use that easement. This is the only thing I can, as a board, hang my hat on that. I'm not, originally, I thought I was burdening the easement. But your client has the right to access from High Street. This isn't the only way to get on the house, on the houses. So go ahead. You want...
Yeah, sorry. I guess I'm not really understanding the question. We're not worried about not being able to use the driveway. We're worried about overuse of the driveway, destroying the lives and the home that my clients and their neighbors had built over decades and reasonably relied upon by dropping in their front yards a 20-foot paved access road. And respectfully, Mr. Chair, fairness and what's right is exactly what you should be considering when deciding whether or not to grant discretionary zoning relief like a variance. The standard includes, is there going to be detriment? I mean, yes, there's going to be detriment. You're basically creating a multifamily paved access road through a single-family residential neighborhood. It's not just my clients. That entire stretch of High Street, it's all single-family. Whereas, they could go onto Main Street, which is much more heavily developed in traffic. Why force all of this traffic and all of this disruption into a single-family residential district? That's exactly what you should be considering when deciding whether to grant a variance.
I understand what you're saying, and totally understand. But like I said, it's going to a point that it's very legal language and stuff, and we can't play that role.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Was the variance that we were voting on the use of that right-of-way?
No, the variance...
Then why are we arguing something that's not in front of us?
Because you're, with your permission, Mr. Chair...
Go ahead.
You're voting on a specific proposal. And the specific proposal, you have the plans in front of you, is to pave over my client's front yard. That's the specific proposal. And if you approve this variance, that's what you're approving. You could approve the variance with a condition that says they have to redesign it so that they access onto Main Street. And my clients would have no issue with that.
Right. But the applicant had exhausted this matter. And apparently, you just heard the Counselor that they didn't give them. It's not like they ignored it. They did exhaust every option, and they were denied. Now, paving easement, if I own 1/6 of an easement, and it's horrible and it needs pavement, I have the right to fix it and pave it to get to my property. So I don't believe paving that property, that easement, is a burden. Or I believe the owner, the applicant, has a right because they use it. But beside this point, it's too old. I want to see what the board is going to say. We get your message. I totally understand. But we get to a point, I understand you said, we're a board. We have to be fair. We have to evaluate. We have to judge. But we get to a point, in cases like this, we hit the wall. And basically, we let it go what the law says. And we cannot be fair or unfair. None of us would have a fair or unfair answer that would solve or not resolve this matter. We try to go as much as we can by the book, and we let it take its course, and we'll see what happens. This is my take on it.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So on Chapter 48, Section 16, right, which is the final unfavorable decision by a permit granting authority, do we have to vote on this, whether we want to reconsider it? Sounds like we're reconsidering it now. But do we have to vote as a board, whether we want to reconsider it?
The chapter 16 is the special permit, right? Or site plan review?
No, that's the reconsideration.
Well, they already did. They already went to planning board, and they...
It says planning board, but it also says our board, I thought, we had to vote, whether we have to reconsider it or not.
Right, of course. That's why she's here. It's so...
So is this going to be like a motion to reconsider it and then look at it? Or is this going to be...
To consider, to approve it, we could re-discuss the matter. Maybe we could say add a tree or so and put more of the conditions. You know, it's to reconsider, to hear it.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? This is what...
Hear it after we vote to reconsider it or not?
No, no.
Or do we vote not to reconsider it, and then it would be, it would be done, and we wouldn't be reconsidering it?
We have to consider it. She already get this approval for us to reconsider. Right now, we're going to go through it. We could modify it. Like I said, put a tree, put a light, put a stairs, whatever you put. And then we'll vote again, if we're going to grant it or not.
What's in front of us is to reconsider it. That's the...
Right. I understand.
You don't have to vote on it. That's what's in front of us.
We are to reconsider. However, we could put conditions on it as well because there's some few evidence with the easement that they came up with and stuff. So we can put more conditions on it or approve or disapprove the way it's presented. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No. I mean, as far as what we're trying to do today is get the reconsideration of the approval. And we'd love it to just be what we presented, but...
That's what you would love. But we have the right to discuss it.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? That make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. But the way I read it, I interpreted it as that we, as a board, have to vote whether we consider it. And then they come back with their original plans, and we look at them all again.
Which they did. They reapplied. They did reaply. And within the reaplication, we start basically from scratch, including the reconsideration. When they reaply, to go back over again, we said, okay, you got to go to planning board, reconsider. I don't think you were here. So they did, and they came back. And now we're reconsidering, and we study it again. You could cut numbers in units. You could add numbers in units. You could put more conditions. It's open for grabs. It's open for any discussion that the board wishes. If it makes sense to you, I mean, the board is open for any, any motion, anybody can throw a motion, somebody could say, I want to throw a motion to grant the way it is, we'll see what happens, anybody could say, I want to throw a motion to deny, we'll see what happens, anybody could throw a motion to say, we'll discuss, we want more conditions in it, we'll see what happens, it's open for any motions, the board can do whatever, all the members have the right to open, say, any motions. You could stop the discussion, right, on the spot, and make a motion. So, so that being said, we go back to questions.
I don't have any.
Apparently Jimmy don't have any. Chris, I mean, Richard, I know where he stands, it's you, Chris, where do you stand?
So I stand whether this, I think this is what, substantial material change for coming back, and you're saying that it is because you've got more rights, or on the right-of-way, you purchased a sixth of the right-of-ways, from what I see.
Correct. The only thing I would like to add, we need to address, last time, I knew it was going up, I felt it was going to be turned down, we need to address that stone wall on Main Street, this is a very dangerous wall. So if I personally to approve, this wall has to be addressed and repaired. I don't know if the owner says it's the town's wall, that the town says it's your problem, that stone wall has to be rebuilt, you get trees going through it, pushing rocks, I mean, I walk there all the time in the summer, and you get rocks, if you just touch them, they fell, before you know it, some kid or elderly gonna get hurt walking there. So that would be one of the conditions I would like to put on that, add to the approval we've granted before. Does the board member want to add anything that they see?
Well, I really didn't get a chance to approve the additional buildings that they were, wanted to put on-
You weren't here.
And take a look at it, so.
I mean, if you wanna, we could continue, so you could read a visit.
I would like to continue it myself.
Okay, you'd like to continue, so what do you think, board, for continuing this matter?
Well, I mean, I think it makes sense for Chris to review everything.
Yeah, otherwise, you only have four people voting. So I would recommend to continue it, so he could look at it.
Well, I tried to look online, and I couldn't find it.
It's old, that's why.
I looked at the closed, and it wasn't listed under the closed projects, so I-
I think when we started it, we weren't putting things online.
It's on the town, it should be on the town website, under active projects.
It should be.
It should be.
I did look at it, and I didn't-
Correct, turning my-
I don't have my computer tonight.
I don't think Chris would be excluded from voting on this, because this is a new application. On the other hand, I don't think he should be prohibited from reviewing the prior, so he understands what he's voting on.
No, no, I didn't say prohibited, because when they reapplied, he was here. When they reapplied, he was here.
So we have a five-member board, it's-
Right, that's what I'm saying, if he, apparently if he didn't see it, he was gonna say no, so we only give, like, the house yard, and give you the benefit of the doubt, let him check it out, and come back with an answer, so we'll see where we're going, so everybody's happy.
I'd like to-
That make sense to everybody? Counselor?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I'd like to say that I think, no matter what we decide, it's not a matter of if this is going to be appealed, it's a matter of who's going to be the appealing party. So either way, I don't think this, if we said, yeah, sure, go ahead, we approve your project, I think the neighbors are gonna appeal it. If we say no, you can't do it, I think the applicant's gonna appeal the decision. Either way, it's gonna end up in somebody else's jurisdiction, that's just-
Right, that's what I'm saying, we get to a point, fairness doesn't make sense, we hit the wall, and that's-
That's the way I see it.
We do what we can, it's gonna, it'll end up somewhere else. So, that being said, let's make a motion to continue.
So moved.
So we have a motion to continue.
There's somebody way in the back room, have we closed the public portion?
Yes.
Somebody waving, raising their hand, if he wants-
Yeah, yeah, come forward, I saw that he's represented by his attorney, but you can come forward, because that's his attorney, Mr. Epstein.
Thank you. I withdraw my motion.
That's okay.
Robert Reed, 181 High Street. I have one question for the board. If the town, municipal maintenance, or the planning board has not given them permission to put a curb cut on Main Street, is that something they can come through the ZBA to-
To force them?
To appeal.
To force the town, you mean?
Yes.
No. We can't force the town to, we don't have that power. The only one have the power, the selectmen.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to speak.
Yes. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Field, 12 Ginnamore Ave, on to the pass.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna be real brief, to answer a couple of questions, dot the i's, dot the t. I've been actively involved in this project, and before it started, there was a former commissioner, his name was David, I forget his last name.
Rick Weiner.
We hired J.C. Engineering, I said, there's a new commissioner, Mr. Turner, and he sent him an email, and we wanted to know how many buildings you could build on the building. He said 14 on that side.
14 buildings or 14 units?
14, 14 buildings at first, and then there was a mistake, and Angela and I, we only sat down with Mr. Turner, he was very professional, and he said, David, if you connect the buildings, it's 14. If you don't connect them, he told me you could have, you could have 14 units, but you had to go get a variance and a special permit. So we decided to go that route, because I thought it was a better fit. I spoke with both of the neighbors, Mr. Reed and the Robinsons, and I told them, they said they were for the project, if we could go from Main Street. So when I went down to the DPW, we asked for a curb cut, they said, because that building was built in 1739, it goes up on a hill, they were concerned about somebody pushing a baby carriage down there in a line of sight. I spent $60,000 with J.C. Engineering to do that, and we tried every, every route to do that. So then, I hired a local contractor to do the site work, Andre, and he said to me, you know, David, we'll see what we can do, but get the back staked out. So we had the back staked out, but when I went down to the town hall, they said, no one paid taxes on this property since 1999. The Reeds didn't pay taxes, the Robinsons, and the owner that we bought the property from didn't pay taxes. They said it's gonna go to land court. I said, how much is owed? They said $6,000. I went to the Attorney Morton, I said, but I don't want, I don't want this to lose, the town hasn't got no money on this since 1999. I paid $6,000 out of my pocket to keep that property. Then I had J.C. Engineering put stakes up, and there's actually, it's not 10 feet, it's 20 feet, there's this cobblestone wall, if you drive by there, you can see it, so the road was in rough shape, and I just wanted to fix it. The bottom line is, I would love to have three duplexes on there, if we can't, and the neighbors don't want it. I have all intentions of putting 14 buildings connected, I will work with the engineering, but right now, I want to continue this, I want to work with the neighbors, the town to give you anything that you need it. And the reason why I thought it was important to let the board know that, you know, there's a new law coming in where the Reeds and the Robinsons, single-family houses could put an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, that's not a burden. If they want to use that, put a single-family house, that's their right. This house was built in 1739, the horses used to come in there, the carriages, and the cars. When we bought the property, it had six apartments in there, three on the first floor, two on the second, one on the other one. The assessor's record only said four, they said, keep it as four, two bedrooms, we kept it that way. Everybody wanted to knock it down, I said to Angela, that's a beautiful building, it's been here since 1739, let's restore it, let's keep it just to four family, and I think it's gonna be beautiful with the three duplexes, but like I said, if we can't do it, eventually, you guys are right, you guys can only do so much. Maybe it has to go to Superior Court, I hope it doesn't have to, but we're either gonna put three duplexes on there, or we're gonna do 14 buildings by right. And we want to work with the town, we want to work with the neighbors, we want to be good neighbors. Angela's gonna live there with her two sons, and each of the duplexes, they're gonna rent out. And everything's on hold right now, because when we put the water lines in there, and one thing I want to add, that wall is on town property. I asked the town to cut down the four, the four trees, and they said, because they're still alive, they won't cover it down. But if the board says, David, fix that wall, I'd be more than happy to get, make a beautiful wall there, make it safe, because right now, it's bad, and the house was bad. That house was, I talked to the police, the fire department, homeless people were living in there. We're doing everything we can to be an asset to the town of Wareham, and I think that Angela, she did a great job there. So anything we can do for the board and the neighbors, we'll bend over backwards to help, because we want to finish this. It's too big of a property, just to leave vacant, we need housing in this town, and we're willing to do anything. So thank you for hearing from me, and thank you for everything this board does, whether you vote for us or don't. And same thing with the neighbors, we love the neighbors, I'm not asking for the tax money back, I could ask for that. Mrs. Robinson, David, it's a burden. I said, no, Mrs., it's not, it's not a burden, because it's not deed restricted, that was the dominant part, so you know what a burden is? You had a fence put on, it's a 20-feet easement, and you put the fence three feet onto that easement, and I get a price from ABS to remove that fence, so it's a 20-foot strip, that's a burden, not the number of cars that go up and down. And if that's, that's not the question for the ZBA board or the planning board, that would be for a Plymouth Court Superior judge to answer, and I'm more than willing to do that, because it's not deed restricted. That is the access, if the town, David Andre, went two months ago, he said, David, I've never not got a curb cut, and we went back, I had J.C. Engineering draw up another set of plans, cost $500, I said, at least I want to try. They put it in, and then the commissioner came back and said, David, we can't do it, because it's gonna be a liability to the town. It's gotta be, it's gotta, the access gotta be through the easement on the back. So I've done everything possible, and I'm willing to do anything, because this town is a beautiful town, the building department, they do their job, and we're very blessed to be able to bought that property, and we're gonna have it for a long time, so anything we can do, but thank you for listening to me, because I don't want to-
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, we're good.
Thank you.
All right, that being said, anything, counselor, before we continue? Okay, can we get a motion to continue till February 2nd, 12?
Um-
You're not here.
Uh, no, you can make it that day.
You can? Okay.
When is it?
February 12. So, can you get a motion for that?
So moved.
A motion by Chris to continue this matter, 21-23, Angela McEwen, 386 Main Street, till February 12, 2025. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy, on the favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And myself, Naziai, we see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you. 54-24, Yusuf Enterprises, 2888 Cranberry Highway.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yeah.
I'd just like to say, I hear a lot of times, people keep coming up here and saying the town needs housing, the town needs housing, we need housing, everybody needs, we need housing. How come I listen to Cool 102 and their advertising over there on Swift's new thing, that they're looking for people? If we need housing, then it should be full, they shouldn't be advertising on the radio. So I don't know if we, you know, I'm not gonna be misled anymore by the town needs housing, because if we're just bringing people in from our listening area on a radio station, it doesn't sound like Wareham needs town, needs housing.
By the place on the head of the bay, they advertise-
Swissnet, or Swissland, or whatever it is?
Oh.
Littleton Drive. Littleton Drive, they're advertising, they want people to come in there.
I know.
I'd like to respond to that, just for the record. I believe Littleton Drive was mandated to give Wareham the first chance at filling those units, they're not all finished yet, if that's, are they all finished?
Hundred percent done.
Hundred percent done?
Yep.
Okay, so they have to let people from within the town of Wareham have first dibs at it, and then if time passes, a certain given period of time passes, then they can open it up to the world, and I'm sure, once it's open to the world, it'll be full.
My, my reason for saying it was, the town of Wareham, they keep hearing, the town needs housing, the town needs housing, but if the town doesn't fill them, and we're looking for other towns, that was my reason for my statement.
I know what you're saying, you're saying we don't need to be providing housing to the-
In case anybody knows, the town's already here, and as it is, and we're already making budget cuts, so, bringing more people in, that are gonna burden us more from the town is-
2888 Cranberry Highway, who's here for that?
Andre.
Yusuf.
Abrego.
Are we on Yusuf?
All right, name and address for the record, sir.
For the record, my name's Abrego, I'm with Diver Hawk Environmental.
All right, public hearing's still open, so I read all your response, all the notes, so, a couple of things, I do agree with the response you made regarding the buffer to the west side. Is it the west side towards the highway? Is that the west side?
The highway is on the southern side.
So it's the east side?
The east side is subway, and to the west is a residential property.
Right, because there's, so, in one, on one of your rebuttal answers to our town council, you said there's no need, where the fence is, actually, there's no need for landscaping, because there's all these woods, which I agree, and I guess you're looking for a variance on the front, because your hardship, the state took like 10 feet or 15 feet from your property, or your clients, right?
Correct, they took 11 feet.
All right, what else was left on, all the other things, you guys pretty much addressed, the lighting, would like to see a few wall packs on the building, I know you gotta remove that big light that disturbs the highway, and add some pylons.
Yep.
Anything else you'd like to discuss?
No, if you read through my comments and you agree with them, I, that sounds great to me.
All right, is, did you guys review the answers? Any questions on that?
Nope.
My only question is, you just mentioned lighting, was there a resolution on the lighting that, when you-
They're gonna take it out, that big thing.
When you go down the road, it shines, yeah, okay, that's-
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's not the best lighting. So that, that was there when our, the current owners bought the property, and they've continued to use it, but we're gonna completely remove that. Mass Highway did just put a couple of new lights right along the layout in front of the property, so we're gonna not even put lighting in the front, we're just gonna put some lighting in the rear, but there will be better lighting that doesn't spill over onto the above us property, and it's blocks it from upward, you know, light pollution, I guess, so there'll be a lot better lighting on the site, is what we're proposing. With a few, we didn't add wall packs, but they are, they will be proposed, we'll add some wall packs to the building to, to help with the lighting.
All right. Richard, do you have a question?
Mr. Chairman, could I give you one other note for the board's consideration tonight?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, Phil, yeah.
No problem.
Hi.
I echo your comments, they did provide responses, they've addressed most of them. I do want to note that one of our comments was, they didn't provide a sweatpath analysis for the fire department, they did provide it for the record, so you do have it on the files, but what we obviously typically look for is a sign-off from the fire department. It is likely they will approve it, but for the record, they don't have it as we're here this evening.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the drawing and the path, so there's no approval from the fire department yet?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other issues hanging there?
The other one that I would raise, you know, we had recommended that they take a strong, hard look at overlaying the pavement on site, they've agreed to do a seal coat on it. My notes for you, for the board's consideration, is that there is some pretty settled areas, especially around the drainage catch basin in the front, that a seal coat just isn't going to fix, and I strongly recommend that the board recommends, considering to the applicant, that they, they do the overlay as opposed to a seal coat, otherwise, we're going to be chasing some drainage problems out there, once they reoccupy this building.
Correct. All right, so, the board want to wait until we get, which I recommend we wait to get, to hear from the fire department? That make sense?
Yeah.
Yes? All right, are we, are we all, are we all in agreement on the variance on the front? Because the highway took their land, unfortunately, so they only have five feet, and they're gonna do landscaping, I saw that. And the lighting, I recommend that we add some wall pack in the walls, and we definitely gonna, gonna ask that you repave, put a, fix the puddle holes and repave the whole driveway, if you let your client know. Okay, so that's a, and we're gonna, that we've been doing, so we want to continue to do this, so an inch and a half, paving the whole thing after you fix it, because you're gonna be digging everywhere, you're gonna fix these catch basins, trucks gonna be in and out, you're gonna change curves, you're gonna be digging for water oil separator, sewer water, all these things, foundations, so you might as well pave the whole thing. So I, my, my take off, I believe the board will agree with me, that we're gonna mandate you that you pave the whole thing, the whole property, do you guys agree?
Yeah.
Richard?
Yep.
All right, very well. So, so we're in the same page, we're just gonna wait to hear from you next hearing from the fire department, so make sure you follow up and get that thing, and then we'll give you a vote then.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, very well.
Continue.
Anyone here in the public want to speak in favor or against? I hear none. Let's move to, to continue till February 12.
So moved.
I have a motion to continue, 54-24, 2888 Cranberry Highway, till February 12, 2025. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
I did have one just raised their hand.
Oh, somebody put. Somebody wants to speak?
All right, all right. We resent a motion. Go ahead. Who's it?
I've let the minute shift on mute.
Who?
Sean Leach.
All right, where is Sean?
Did you give him?
He's in, he's just on mute.
He's on, whoever it is that wants to speak, you have to unmute yourself.
I'm here for another hearing. I'm not here for this hearing.
Okay, very well. We continue with our vote. Troy?
Aye.
For the continuous. Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And myself, I, this, this matter is continued till February 2012. I mean, February 12th, 2025, and we're waiting to hear from the fire department. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let me take this with me.
Okay.
All right, we move forward to 66-24 Taunton Federal Credit Union, special permit for site plan review and drive through 2512 Cranberry Highway. Who's here for Federal Credit Union?
For the record, Mr. Chairman, Sean Leach for Northeast Engineers and Consultants. I'm here for Taunton Credit Union for the special permit for the drive through at 2512 Cranberry Highway.
Okay, very well. All right, I believe last time you guys opened it and.
We opened it, we told them, put together a 53G account.
And let's start with the process, right?
And then we, yeah, and we, and ta-da.
All right, let, okay, let's see. Did you guys open 53G account?
Correct. That's all set.
They did? All right, Counselor, let's hear it.
I'm an engineer. So I gave a brief presentation last meeting. I don't know if you can turn on my video and I can give a, share my screen. I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, please.
I don't know who is running. Hey, I'm here, I believe. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. All right. Again, Sean Leach for Northeast Engineers, representing Taunton Federal Credit Union in regards to a site at 2512 Cranberry Highway. I'd like to share my screen at this time, if I could, please. This is a pro, I don't know, can you see the screen?
No.
No.
Can you see it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, can you see the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is, this site originally, there was a house and a workshop on here. It's right across almost from the police station. It already had some parking and two curb cuts. There was a pool that we found out when we did test bits that was filled in essentially. These buildings have been removed by a demolition permit last fall. So we'd like to move ahead with, move ahead with the site plan. Can you see the site plan? No?
Sir, sir, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Is drive through allowed there or you need a variance for it?
This is, this is a special permit.
Because it's a bank, it's a special permit?
Yes.
I guess they.
No.
No. It's not requ, it's an allowed use, isn't it?
It's an allowed use. It's a site plan review because it's over 10 parking spots and it's a variance for the drive through.
Okay, so you need a variance, so, because if it's just a site plan review, you at the wrong board. You need to be at the planning board.
Understood. No, we are understood and we have the denial letter from the building official in regards to this and that's why we're here tonight, the variance for the drive through.
Okay, but you know, does not call for a variance.
Well, according to the, according to the most recent ones, that's what I'm looking right now. What zone, what, what are they zoned?
GC, it's not allowed. The commission is right.
It's a no.
Van, drive through is not allowed.
Yeah, I know, I was.
General commercial.
Yeah, okay. I got the N. Yep, I was just looking. It used to be allowed.
Correct. So can you see the screen?
Yeah, you could speak about it, but go ahead.
Okay, so this is the layout of the site plan essentially. I won't go into the other details with the old. We have engineered this. We've gone to conservation. There are no wetlands on the site. We've engineered drainage systems and everything for site plan review, but we need to obviously get a variance here for the drive through. The drive through will be situated on the northeast, northwest side of the building, a three bay drive through. The entrance will come off Route 28 over here. The entrance can come around and the drive through will come out, the exit. So these will be one-way exits with entrance and exit signs. What we're looking for is like a typical bank drive through, like all most banks that we have nowadays. It's basically a simple drive through on one side of the building with a typical bank building with adequate parking. We're actually reducing the number of parking spaces that were there on the previous site. But because we are, we have to go through site plan review, we need this variance in order to proceed.
Okay. Well, it is, it's definitely a good idea, nice plan. I like what you're doing. But unfortunately, you're gonna go back and advertise for a variance. You're gonna re-advertise this matter.
Can you look at the, I apologize if I could interrupt. Can you look at the denial letter from the building commissioner, Mr. Chairman?
It says not allowed.
No, it says special permit for site plan review with drive through use.
No, it just says special permit from zoning requirement for site plan, but being not allowed is automatic variance.
I advertise as listed.
I understand.
You were asked to advertise this as a special permit.
Right, when something, I mean, if, if he, if the commissioner is talking to a homeowner, I could understand a homeowner will be confused. It'll be, it'll be, oh, okay, if the commissioner says special permit, not allowed special permit when, but when he's talking to a professional, I mean, with all due respect, sir, you should pick on it. Not allowed means you need a variance for it. But regardless, easy fix. We will discuss your plan, but we're gonna put back on, uh, we're gonna re-advertise it. We won't charge you. We just, you just pay for the mailing, for the, what do you call it?
Stamps?
For the stamp, for the postage and the paper, but you won't pay for a fee, for application fee. But we have to put it back on the paper as a variance and we won't be acting on decision until it's advertised as a variance. All right, that being said, let's continue with your demonstration and we go from there.
Okay, is my understanding, my understa, anyway. So the site plan that you see here is basically, you know, how the site is going to lay out on, on the previous site and with the three days for the drive through. So there's a pretty good traffic plan. We understand we are going to go, have to go to Mass DOT for the curb cut. We expect to do that once we get approval from site plan of the layout and everything that you see before you with the, uh, drive through. So what, what would you be looking for? Obviously the approval just to have variance for the drive through and then we can proceed forward with site plan review and do the rest of what's required at that time.
Okay. Phil, you, you there, Phil?
Yes, Mr. Jim.
All right, did you, did you have a chance to look at it?
We, we have not yet. They just submitted the site plan review package to us last week. I spoke with Peter Ambrose from Taunton Federal Credit Union early today to let him know that we would not have a review by any time, but we would certainly have it for them probably by the end of this week.
Yeah, wow. Sir, what's, what's the engineer's name?
My name's Sean Leach.
Sean, Sean, uh, what, this is good. We're on track. There's not much time wasted because our consultant would have come back with a comment that you need a variance regardless. No big deal. Just come to the office and have Sonya re-advertise and we can work it out. And we'll continue in this. In the meantime, if we don't have no comments from the engineer, technically, we can't really discuss anything without comments. But however, I open it to the public for personal, for their comments and to the public, okay? So Troy, what do you think of the project?
I don't have a problem with the project.
Jimmy?
My question is, if they're going to have to re-advertise it, is this going to add time to the clock or?
Can we, can you give me one minute, please, Chairman?
I. You mean, we, we give them a second?
Do they have to wait 30 days after the advertising and all this jazz or?
No.
Okay, so we can, so the site plan, the engineer can go forward and make his recommendations?
Exactly.
And so we're really just, we're looking at the site plan?
Honest mistake.
Yeah, okay, and the variance is just a matter of crossing the Ts and.
Right.
Like to, I'd like to, um.
If for some reason we go with the, the way it is and anybody appeal it, it'll be that. It would go with summary judgment.
Well, I just, I guess, I guess my concern is it would be a disservice to the applicant to put them through this entire site plan review without giving them some kind of an indication on.
Oh, if we're willing. Oh, okay, okay, I understand. We will.
I think, I think, um, I personally don't see a problem with a.
Right.
Bank at that location and, and, or a drive through.
Right.
So my letter, it is correct. So you needed site plan review for the, for the site because of the number of parking spots.
Correct.
In commercial general, the drive through for a non-food, drive-in, drive-through establishment is by special permit zoning.
By special permit?
Correct.
Not variance?
Not a variance.
That's right.
Oh, okay, so.
So it doesn't have to be re-advertised.
So why you said not allowed on your letter?
Well, it's not allowed. It's allowed by special permit.
Right.
All right, very well. So forget everything we said. X, this, we back.
Gilda Radner, never mind.
The second paragraph I wrote.
I understand. I would, if I was to read it, I would say it would be only allowed by special permit.
Okay.
For being saying not allowed, the big bold letter, I assume it's a variance. So very well. No harm done. Everybody's happy. We back on track. So you don't have to do anything, sir.
Okay.
On regarding drive through, you okay with that?
I am.
Jimmy, apparently I'm okay with it. Richard?
Okay.
Chris?
I'm fine. Looks like a good project.
Connor, you learning something? Okay, you could pop, you could ask questions. Don't be shy. All right, until we hear from the, our consultant, I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone here in favor or against this project? Favor or against? Anyone on Zoom in favor or against? Okay, very well. That being said, sir, I mean, Philip, you think you could give us answer by next hearing?
Absolutely. Our intent is we can give everything by the end of the week to the applicant through Sonya and they should be ready positioned for the next meeting.
All right, very good. So that being said.
Should we ask, should we ask the applicant if, if, if they get it by the end of this week, we'll maybe ready for the next hearing?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Sean, you'll be ready for?
Scope, obviously, yeah. I think it would be not be a problem.
No problem. Okay, very good. So we're gonna continue till February 12th. Is that fine with you?
That's fine with me.
All right, very well. Can we get a motion for that?
So moved.
Before we go any further, man, sorry. Do you want to say anything?
No, I was just here in case you had questions from the credit union.
All right, very good. Thank you. Sorry, we just get confused.
A quiet person is the sign of wisdom.
Yeah, that's right. All right, so, one second. Which one is this? This is this. All right, we get a motion to continue by Jim until the 12th, February 12th, 2025. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So that's continued until the 12th.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you. You're welcome. So that's 66-24. Okay. Now we also continue to.
You taking this or you doing?
All right, 68-24 John F. Keen, special permit and a variance for 18 Highland Road. All right, Counselor, public hearing still open. Name and address for the record.
Robert Terry, 191 Main Street. I'm representing the petitioner here.
Okay, let's see where we left from there.
Pardon me?
Let's go back. Where did we leave it last time?
Well, I wasn't here last time. I'm brand new to this.
Right.
Almost as of today. But I understand that last time you were out.
Right.
They only had a four-member board and they continued a number of cases, including my clients.
Correct.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, I saw the, the, I watched the movie and I read the minutes.
So we're really, I think, kind of starting from scratch tonight, are we not?
Right, right, that's right. That's why you didn't argue it last time. So you could argue it from scratch.
All right, good enough. Uh, my client owns real estate at 18 Highland Road here in Wayham. Not far from his location, as a matter of fact. And it has on it two structures and they've been there since long before zoning, I don't know, 100 years?
111.
111, okay, so, long time. One of them is an approved three-family dwelling. The other is, uh, I don't know where this was originally built at because it obviously, 111 years were probably not as a garage, but, uh, it, it's a 80, by what?
800 square feet.
800 square feet is good enough. 400 square feet of it were previously approved for a recreational facility. A bathroom is in there by permit and that's 100 square feet and the other 300 square feet are recreational. The building is twice that size. My client is desirous to convert that to living quarters, which would effectively be a fourth, uh, living space on that lot. Now, in order to do that, he needs three variances. He needs a use variance, uh, according to, to building commissioner and he has applied for that. And the reason he needs it is because there are two struc, structures. Three-family, 800 square foot structure. He needs a variance from the dimensional requirements of the bylaw because the latest survey shows he's got 14,710 square feet of area, 75-foot frontage. Obviously, if you do the calculation under the bylaw, he needs more on both, both sides. And finally, he needs a variance under the bylaw to alter an existing structure, to make a change in use. Now, under the, uh, under section 10 of 48A, he has to show at least his two of the variances. That there's something unusual, something unique about the property. And what it says is, as you all know better than I do, that there has to be something, some circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape or topography of the land or the structure. Now, a lot of you probably know he was here two years ago and he didn't quite make it. He's here again because circumstances have changed and what's causing him a problem now is the structure. In order to occupy this property, any one of the three approved dwellings in the big building, he would have to go upstairs. And he's getting at the point, I have some doctor's reports and a doctor's letter here. I just would not put those into evidence, quite honestly. I'm not medical reports. But he, he's got serious orthopedic problems. But he, he's got serious orthopedic problems, as well as having undergone cancer operation. The 800-square-foot building is almost down at ground level. And he wants to redo this into a fourth living unit and move in there. There, all he has to be able, is be able to get up four inches from ground level in order to get in and out of this building. Once again, even the first unit, the first floor unit, pretty good set of steps to get up there. And he just is getting to the point where he can't do it. It would seem that the 48A section 10 is certainly satisfied here. Is his hardship because of the structure, or his hardship is his health as it relates to the structure? And that's why we're asking that he be given the three variances, so that he can ultimately move into that unit. It's half there already, because there's already a bathroom in that unit by permit. And what he needs to put in is a kitchen and partition off the bedroom in the other 400 square feet. So I'm urging you to seriously consider this application in order that he can live on his own property and not have to move away somewhere else.
Chapter, chapter 48, section 10, counsel, is very clear. The hardship, uniqueness, all these four statues is about the land, not about the person. I mean, you're here representing the land, not the person.
That's always been my position.
Our heart goes out for him, that he's sick, he can go, we all get him, all that, I totally understand. But right here, you're asking for three variances, that none of them called for hardship. I don't see any hardship for frontage, square footage, and number of unit. You already, that land, if you are to find this land right now, you can only put one unit on it. He already have three on it, which is fine, good for him, it's been there, no question asked, nobody's arguing that. To add a fourth unit and call it a hardship, I don't see how this is a hardship.
That he can't occupy any one of his other three units?
That's not a hardship.
Well, it's not a hardship.
It's not a hardship, it's for the person.
It's related to the structure on the other units, which, as a matter of fact, is part of 48A.
You could put a ramp.
The hardship is directly related to the three-unit building. And he can be relieved of that hardship by given the opportunity to use the 800-square-foot building.
All right, put a ramp. Put a ramp to go.
I'd hate to do that at my house, I'm starting not to be able to get up to.
Or.
A ramp is not a lot easier to get up and down when you've got joint problems than is.
This is a.
Where you don't have to get up and down at all.
All right, well, I, this, this meant decommission one whole floor, and I have no problem give you that. Decommission, take a whole floor out, take it, make it disappear. You ask, this, this neighborhood, I know very well, it's all mostly, mostly, 99% single-family, there's few, multiply two. He already have three, and good for him. For us to consider to add, to add a shed or a garage, to have a fourth unit, and to break four zoning bylaws and call it a hardship, I don't see that personally. But I wanna pass it to the board, maybe they see it different. Troy, what do you think?
I agree with you.
Jimmy?
I'm with you.
Richard?
I'm good.
I, I agree with you, now, the existing apartment, isn't there a first floor, could he use that? Can he move into that?
Of course you can, you put a ramp, you can.
He owns the property, he can live in any one of the three units.
Usually he can.
But just, just, if you're gonna, if you're gonna put a ramp in, it's one inch for every, foot for every height, one inch you go up. So if his house is really off the ground, the ramp's gonna have to stretch quite a ways, so.
I've seen.
I didn't think it was very high, the first floor.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I just, I'm just using it.
Right, every 12 feet, you have to go up a foot.
That first floor is four and a half feet up versus four inches on where he'd like to be able to live.
Thank you.
So you're just gonna make.
You'd have 40, 42 feet of ramp, right?
Right.
48 feet, 50, 50 feet of ramp?
Well, that, well, that's good.
Yeah, but that, but either way, it don't, I personally don't see a hardship doing for that, but everybody has their opinion. Maybe go to the, to the public, anyone in here in favor of this matter? Anyone is against this matter, anyone on Zoom?
You have many, many letters in the application of people in favor, the whole neighborhood's 21, 21 letters.
Okay.
Just gonna mention that, but I don't see the.
Well, right, right now, I mean, Richard leaning toward saying yes to you, but you got four members disagreeing with that.
I, I can hear that approximately the reverse of what I need.
Right, so, and you could keep arguing it, maybe you could convince three more members. Yes, Commissioner?
I want to bring it to the board's attention that there's a cease and desist on the back building. So the applicant's been renting that out through Airbnb, as just a room with a bathroom. That area was permitted for in 2003 for a recreation room for Mr. Keaton's personal use only.
He has been, he went to Board of Health, and he properly registers as being with Board of Health. I think he can do the Airbnb, he's in a zone that provides the bed and breakfast.
That space is not approved for that use.
The garage is not approved, it's approved for recreational, so like a shop.
One of the square feet existing are approved for recreation. That's what Airbnb seems to be, is a recreational thing.
It's a stretch. Recreation is not sleep and safe with smoke detectors and all that.
Some people treat sleeping as a recreation.
I mean, that one of your jokes, I.
I wasn't being funny, no, no, I, I meant it, you know, I'm.
So bottom, bottom line, it's not, it's not legally a living space, whether Airbnb, living or anything, but that's not what we're here for. Bottom line, there's a cease and desist, he's been using it illegally. Besides the point, whether he's been using it illegally or not, I still not convinced you have, you have, I still convinced that you don't have a hardship. Not for this size law. How many bedrooms each been there, unit?
Two per unit, I think, they said. So could, could the garage unit that was approved for use as a rec room be attached to one of the three apartments and used as a bedroom, under current permit, under current?
From a legal point of view, yes, from a practical point of view, no, the older your plans.
From a legal point, yes, from a practical?
From a legal point, absolutely, yes, that'd be, that'd be the only one variance. The problem is, he's, he's got his parking lot right in the middle, it's a pretty good distance, it's impractical to even think of joining the two together.
Plus you have FAR, you have building coverage.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
He's under Wayham Village too, correct? So you can only have 50% coverage.
The reason I was asking is, I, I think, it just appears to me that the goal here is more aimed at creating a fourth unit than anything else. If the, if the building is approved for this, then you've got four rents, you could move to Florida and collect four rents, and the rents would pay you away, and I, I think I could live off three rents off that property and live nicely in Florida. But that's, I, I live.
On the intent.
I live frugally. But I still think that, based on the rents I've seen around town, if I had income from three rents, I could do pretty good, so I'm, I'm, I'm not moved.
All right, so what's the wishes, the board? Wanna continue, you wanna make a motion, you wanna close, you wanna open, what do you wanna do?
I'd, I'd make a motion to deny.
You gotta close it first.
Well, okay, then I make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to glow, to close, I have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, nausea, it's closed. What's the wishes?
So I'll move to deny, but I'll make my motion to be without prejudice. I don't want to deny and prevent them from coming back in two years. If they come up with a new argument, and they wanna put in a new application, it, before two years passes, it's, it's his money.
So he could come back tomorrow with the application, the way you say.
A new application.
Right.
I'm, I'm just saying, I, oh, you could amend my motion and say, no, I want it to be with prejudice, my motion would be a motion to deny.
All right, any discussion on this motion? Chris, you have any discussion on that motion?
No.
Richard?
Nope.
Troy?
Nope.
I, I recommend to be straight denial without.
Denial with prejudice, okay, I withdraw that, then, all I needed was one person.
Your motion, if it passes, if somebody goes with your motion, it's your motion. Do we have a second on Jim's motion?
Nope.
Without prejudice?
I withdraw it and I'll remove.
Okay, so you wanna withdraw your.
I'll, I'll restate it, that my motion is to deny.
Any discussion on this matter? No discussion, do I have a second on this motion? Okay, if no this, no second, I'll second this motion, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Nay.
Chris?
Aye.
And aye, it's dead, sorry.
So what's, what's nay?
He said no.
No, so it's 410?
410, yes. Okay. Next hearing, I'm thinking, is 70-24 Dos Amigos LLC, 36 Restful Lane. Yes, everything. All right, where's John, oh, counsel, how are you?
How are you?
Good. All right, public hearing still open, name and address, and let's hear that.
Uh, you're a title bomb, I'm representing the applicant, Dos Amigos Realty, located at 12 Fellowship Circle, West Wayham, and this is in relation to 36 Restful Lane, East Wayham. We, I was in a couple of weeks ago, but you were absent, Mr. Chairman. This is kind of an interesting issue from the perspective of which controls here. In terms of whether a building permit should be issued, so I asked for it to be continued, so that you could weigh in and give us your thoughts as well.
Okay. So what's the history of that property?
The history of the property is, there was a house there, it burned in March of 2018. At the time, I think it was section 1322, talked, talked, gave you as of right to reconstruct after a fire. Subsequently, in the fall 2018 town meeting, zoning bylaw was amended to give you only 18 months as of right, and then a further petition afterwards for six months for ZBA for a variance, just on that section, not dimensionally use, but just on that section. We had applied for a, a building permit in September, the prior owner fought cancer for a while, died, it was stuck in probate for a couple of years. My client closed on the property, I think, the end of August, beginning of September. There was an application filed with the building department in September. There was an initial buildability letter that was submitted by Attorney Maderos in October, and he was arguing back and forth with section 1320 and the applicability, and whether it should count for somebody who had it burned down before the, the time limits were put in place, and so on and so forth. Mr. Churchill asked me to look further into it, and I, I took a little different approach, and I think you'll, you'll see that in my supplemental buildability letter, which talks about section 1354 and the ability to replace structures, and also in concert with 628 and 621. 628 goes through the, the small lots and the minimum setbacks, we would meet all those requirements. 621 talks about the performance here, which is, you know, if you still have your non-conforming use, you should be able to rebuild, so long as your only non-conformances are frontage, which is a non-conformance with this, and lot size, which is the second non-conformance. So that's our position here, we're just looking for some guidance from the board on this.
All right, I did, it's actually 1320, not 22. The only, the only, I've, when did that bylaw came in, the 18 months, what year?
That came in 2018 Fall Town Meeting, it probably would have been approved by, within 90 days by the AG, I would think, so. 2018, 2019, but the fire occurred in March of 2018, so.
So the bylaw came after the fire?
That's correct.
So just to let everybody know, we, we had, before this bylaw came in, there was no statute of limitation on fire in Wayham for many reasons. Say you're fired, house going, you're fired, you don't have money to rebuild it, you can't get a mortgage. So to put a restriction 18 months, a lot of people can't go get a mortgage, or maybe they're retired, or they don't have money, or they don't have enough deposit, or many questions. I don't know who, the author of this, the author of this bylaw, it should be tweaked and have a lot of, some sense to it. I think your best bet on this matter, because this fire happened before that, based on that personally, I would overturn the decision of the commissioner based on that matter. If you go on 1354, I will have to agree with the, with the commissioner, because it's been abandoned, which is true. I know it's, it's an existing non-conforming law, but when the, when you abandon the use or the building, you abandon the use, so basically, it's a useless law. Then there's another thing going on, I believe February 2nd, it goes into effect. If it come, it's a legal law, correct, Commissioner? If it's 75, 100 square feet and 10,000 square feet, 100 feet of frontage, or 75, isn't that coming into effect on February 2nd? By the state?
I thought of that also, the only thing that, I have the section of the, the law that's supposed to go into effect on February 2nd. It says adjacent lots under common ownership shall not be treated as a single lot for local zoning purposes. This is a stand-by-itself lot.
Oh, oh, only adjacent lots, so the lot.
Just, it's written so vague.
Yeah, I think they're trying, what they're trying to do is get rid of the merger doctrines, so you can carve your lot back.
I agree with that, but it doesn't say that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring that up.
The legislature wrote it.
Correct.
I don't know what they say.
Yep.
Also, freestanding a lot, it doesn't apply to.
Doesn't apply. Again, that's what I would rule, and then you guys could overrule, or we could.
I understand. I, I totally agree on 1354 with the commissioner, but I, again, I don't agree with 1320, because your fire happened prior to 1320 coming into effect, so I think he's more of a grandfather to rebuild that house, personally. We'll pass it by the board and start asking questions.
If I may, just to give what I think might be a little bit of the history for why they adopted 1320 and put those time limits in, is because there were some, there were some fires in some fairly visible places in this town, and the owners did not exactly act with speed in some instances. In some instances, they couldn't act, but in other instances, it was discretionary as to when they were gonna rebuild. You know, they waited, they waited, they waited, and in the meantime, we all get to look in an eyesore. And so I can understand the, why the bylaw was adopted for that basis. But the other problem with the bylaw is that it didn't contemplate the pandemic, which nobody could find anybody to do any work. Another interesting thing. Another interesting thing that's going to be upcoming is the effect of these California fires on insurance payments and insurability of properties. So I think that's going to cause further difficulties for people in dealing with 1320 going forward.
Right. Well, I know exactly the property you're talking about was a big stink in town.
Yeah.
That property went in fire. The guy who lived there, he literally has a broken bicycle, literally didn't have money to eat.
Yeah.
So when the fire happened, the town went out and took it down, and they attached the property. The guy is dead now anyway. But that guy, that particular guy, didn't even have money to pay taxes or insurance or nothing. Literally, I knew that guy. If you don't give him food every day here and there, he couldn't eat. But you get fires that people collect a lot of money for it and keep it in eyesore. But that's beside the point. But I believe, I said what I believe, and I go back to the board. Troy, what do you think?
I'm kind of in agreement with you.
On the 1320?
Yep.
Jimmy?
Confused a little bit. Earlier, you spoke about 18 months and then six months. What were you, what did I, did I hear something about being changed to six months?
Yeah, effectively, the 18 months, you could rebuild as of right once this 1320 passed. And then if you weren't able to get, you know, pull your permits in 18 months, you could come, and it was almost a ministerial act of the ZBA to grant a variance. In other words, you could show up, plead your case, yeah, I didn't get it done in 18 months, but you know, I'm looking to conform with the existing zoning and so on and so forth, aside from these places where we slapped the three acre zoning on top of everything to cut down on the density. So I think that's what it was. It was basically almost seen as a ministerial action. So you would categorize it as a variance, because that's how they put it in the bylaw, but it wouldn't be a variance in the sense of a dickering or a horse trading or something like that.
Okay.
So it would be almost a variance as of right, I guess might be a way to put it. I don't know if the Commissioner would agree with me, but, because maybe he wouldn't want to not be able to.
I guess, what's got me is that when this, this lot was created and it was built on, there was a house on it, and it was allowed use.
Right.
And that was what the neighborhood, the whole neighborhood was built on similar sized lots.
Exactly.
So here we've got this neighborhood with all these houses on these sized lots. The place burns down, the guy dies, that considered, I guess if I died, I'd consider that abandoning my wife, I suppose. Death is a form of abandonment, I suppose.
Probate time.
Probate always.
Takes a lot of time.
But then the town came along and tore it down. He didn't. So he didn't abandon the property. It was still there, and the town tore it down on him. So I'm just like listening and I'm saying, okay, somebody else has come along now and bought it, probably got a good price on it, wants to put a house on it and will make money, but where's the harm? I guess that's my question to everybody, to the board, to anybody. Who's getting hurt by putting a house here?
That's the law.
The law?
I mean, it's got to go to.
I don't mind hurting the law.
No, I totally understand. This is why there's laws, and you have to filter it and go through it. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here, and everybody would just go and start building. Of course, there's no harm, and I'm all for it to be rebuilt, but there's a process due, and I totally understand what you're saying, but that's why we're here.
Yeah.
If we all agree, it can be rebuilt, no question asked. But I'm all with you, and no one's hurt, but it doesn't mean you could just go do it.
Well, I know that doesn't mean you can just go do it. I get that. But I mean, I guess my discussion is, how do we say yes, and how do we justify saying yes? I'd like to grant relief. I'd like to see, I'd like to see the neighborhood get another house in it. I think it would be good housing. I think it could be affordable housing. I, you know, hopefully.
I got a house.
Hopefully, the applicant doesn't, you know, gouge and charge some ridiculous price for the property after he builds it, you know, but that's got nothing to do with it.
Exactly.
It's a good neighborhood and.
What are you going to say?
The applicant does have an avenue to build a house here, just require variances.
He has an, okay, so what, what do you?
Be lot area, setback.
So in other words, there's a foundation there now. Rip the foundation out, consider it a blank lot, and come back and ask for a variance for?
That's in the letter. It's actually.
Okay.
It is in the letter if we go through 1354, but if we go through 1320, which I agree with, I would like to go through 1320, that 18 months does not apply to that property. If we are to go through 1354.
Because, okay, you're saying because it burnt down before the bylaw, and it should be.
That's how I look at it. But 1354, the Commissioner is absolutely right. You need variances left and right, because it's been abandoned over two years.
Well, then, to your point, if you're leaning to 1320, not being able to look back in time, but fire loss perspective, look going forward in time, if you were to find that factually, then maybe you could sustain allowing a building permit under 1320.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yes. It's a little, it's a little circuitous, but that's what they hired me for.
Right. Richard, what do you think?
I'm in agreeance with you and Jim.
The 1320?
Yep.
Chris?
I agree.
Anyone in the public want to speak in favor against this matter? Anyone on Zoom?
Just as a, just as a note, Mr. Chairman, there was a couple here two weeks ago, and you know, no action was taken, and there wasn't any presentation. But I talked with them afterwards, and they are glad to see a house go in. Right now, there's a fence block. See, I think I had Mr. Churchill remove it. They told me there was a fence on the property that had fallen into their property. And so I told John, I says, let's get you guys out there. Let's just get rid of this thing. Let's start being good neighbors. But they're happy. Right now, it's a dumping ground, as you can imagine. You know, anything vacant in Wareham gets dumped on. That's a sad fact. And they would love to see a house go in there and spruce up the neighborhood.
All right, very well. Before we close, do you have anything you want to say?
No, you know, I don't blame Commissioner Turner for what he said. I mean, he's looking at the bylaw as it was written. You know, it should have contained a grandfathering provision. I think, we all think it should. Does it? It's not specified. So he was stuck with the language of the bylaw, and I don't think he had a lot of choice under 1320 but to issue the denial letter.
Our 1354. All right, can we close?
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing, this application.
Any discussion in closing here? And I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir. I close.
So I think what we're going, I believe if I'm saying this correctly, we kind of are in consensus of opinion that we might be stretching things a little bit, but our decision, my motion would be that, based on the fact that this fire happened prior to the bylaw that puts a time limit, that it's a buildable lot, I don't want to say by right, but.
No, what we're going to do with all due respect to the Commissioner, overturn his decision based on 1320.
Okay.
Overturn his denial based on Section 1320.
Based, okay, based on the time of, because of the time of the fire.
Right. Okay, so that's Jim's motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir. Aye. That carries. Okay.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
We go to other business and discussion with Mr. Josh Farady. Is it Flaherty or Farady?
Farady, no.
All right, so Josh, you have some things you want to show us?
I'll do it quickly. Just give me a quick moment to pull it up here.
Just a guess on how it tonight.
Yeah.
Because she said I was coming. I talked about this soon.
Yeah, that's what I was, she told you.
Go ahead, Josh.
Yep, I'm just. It's a non-debatable motion if someone wanted to make it.
No, I want this part. I haven't had any training on this.
I'm going to sit here. I know what you're saying. Yeah, it's not doing it. No, you get it all the way down, and then it forces itself back. Okay, so what I would like to show the board here is how to access your projects via the OpenGov portal. I'm going to show you how to get there through the Planning Department, only because when I went to upload it to the Zoning Board of Appeals page, I was made aware that we are getting a new website, and any changes that we make are going to be ineffective. So the process will still be the same. I can send you the link. It just doesn't make sense to update the website at this point, because we are getting a new one.
The whole town, the whole town website's changed?
The entirety of the town website. We're moving to a new service provider for the website.
A new service provider?
Yeah.
So, but the website will be the same?
It will be very similar. Not identical, but very similar. If you wanted to look at an example, Swansea, Plymouth, a few other communities have the new system. But, okay, so let me show you through the Planning Board how to access a project. And again, I'll just send you the link to get there. So on there, as I put it, in the Projects page, this walks you through, sorry, jump, this page that I put on the Planning Board, the how to, will walk you through how to actually get it step by step. But once you get pretty much to the search progress, it's typing in an address and going from there. So that's a step by step. You can find that on the Planning Board page. I'll walk it through you, walk it through for you very quickly. So here we are on the OpenGov page. In the top right-hand corner, you can see where it says "Search." You quickly type in a location.
I didn't see where it said "Search" on the right.
It's just in, yeah, you can't see where my finger is. That makes sense. Search is here.
Okay. So we go to the town website, and we go to the word "search."
Yeah, and I'll do you one better. I'll send you the direct link.
Okay.
Town website or OpenGov.com?
It's findable on the Planning Board page, the Conservation page, not on the Zoning Board page because of the migration to the new website. But again, I'll send you.
Thank you.
I'll send you a link.
Now, is that a link that we can share? Somebody calls me up and says, Jim, how do I look this up? I can share the link?
Yeah, this is fully accessible by the public. So any information that I'm showing you how to get to, the public can just as easily follow these steps and find any project that's been applied for online. And this system does building permits, it does some of the town clerk's permits, select board. So there's actually a lot more information here than just planning, zoning, conservation. So I'll just pull up one of the addresses that we've talked about tonight. Let's look at it. Totten Federal Credit Union, just because Cranberry Highway is interesting, because you're not going to actually type in Cranberry Highway. It has to be abbreviated. So, but if you got to the Cran part, it's going to pull up the address you're looking for.
But if we typed Cranberry, we'd get a zero result?
Yeah, you won't get anything if you.
Just like, just like it currently is?
Yeah.
Okay.
But because of some of the restrictions on the length, you're stuck with Cran Highway. But here you see building permits, zoning applications, conservation permits, and gas permits. And again, these are all fully viewable by the public. You click on your specific permit. It will give you kind of what they're in front of the Commission for.
So wait a minute, let me, let me back you up. Click on my specific permit?
There's nothing to click on here. It's just an indication of the permit they've come before you for.
So how do I know, when I get to this page and I want to see what's going on at Totten Federal Credit Union, and all I know is Totten Federal Credit Union, when I get to this page, what do I do?
So this is, this is the application that they've applied for, but if you wanted to see the actual application, that would be under the Files section. And here, the applicant is going to upload the denial letter from our building commissioner. They'll upload the plans, and again, you can just click on that, click on that.
Thanks.
And it'll bring up the plans that you viewed tonight.
So I'm not being obtuse, but I just didn't follow you, so.
Let me.
Can you go back a couple, two or three clicks and do that again? So we get, we get to the link that you're going to send me?
So you'll, you'll type in the address that you're looking for. You'll click on the application that you want to look for. Usually zoning applications, we have abbreviated the zone currently.
So the trick is to know the address. If you know the address, you're in.
If you know the address, you're golden.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was missing.
If you have, I'll back up one, two. If you have the record identifier, which is these numbers here, you can also search it by that.
That's the number, that's the 54-25, or 1-25, or, okay.
So, yeah, but I think for sake of ease, if you know the address, I think that's how most people would do it by.
Yeah.
So this, again, this is the page that would pop up. Type of application, applicant, project narrative of what they're trying to do, and some general information I think the board is interested in. And then you would go to Files to view the plan, the abutters list, the deed, you know, all the information you guys originally get in your application anyway. The denial letter. And again, you can, you could click on all these, and you can choose to download it to your computer, or if you just click the version, it pops it up in a different window.
So you're going to send us that link via email, via text, via what?
However you want it. You tell me. I'll send it every way you can receive it.
I'll take it as a text.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Do you think, you guys think that this would be helpful?
Sorry, can you speak into a mic, please?
I'm sorry. Do you think that potentially, at some point, once you get used to working with this, that this would replace the paper in front of you?
I don't think, I don't think you're going to get any board to unanimously agree to go digital, unless you get a whole bunch of 18-year-olds on the board.
Well, I know that I can't.
I know, I don't have great hair.
So I would say the Conservation Commission is almost entirely digital, but what they like to see is the full set plans in front of them.
They want to see paper.
That's what I like.
So.
As he likes paper.
So they've moved to all the application material being digital, but actually having a full-size plan to view at the hearing.
So I guess the answer to the question from me would be, I think we need both. We continue to need, Chairman, one? We continue to need, our chairman wants a set, a full set of plans.
Our chair needs large plans.
With the glasses, I can't even see the small ones.
I want to, and, and there's people that like the computer, there's people that like a tablet. We can do that same link off of a smartphone and get to it.
Smartphone, tablet, computer, yeah. Your fridge, if you got one of those ones, yeah.
It'll get you there.
It does.
How good your eyes are.
But I wouldn't recommend that you stop accepting full-size plans. I think those are very important for you guys to view, especially in a hearing.
So I guess all we really need is that link. I've got, so now, let me ask you this. I've got links, like right now, I've got a link that I can just touch to get to the bylaws, the current active bylaws. Will that link still work, or do I need to go to this?
Oh, for the new webpage? I don't know.
I got a Zoning Board of Appeals documents link. If I touch that now, it takes me to, you know, documents. If I take, if I click on this link here for a zoning map, 2007 zoning map, it takes me there, but is it going to still take me there?
I definitely don't work in the IT department, but from what I understand, if you were to type in our current website after we migrate to the new one, it will still get you to the same place.
So everything, everything existing is going to get linked over somehow?
Yep.
Good job for somebody. Somebody's going to be busy.
We're paying someone to do it, I believe.
Yeah, I get it, I get it. So what's the gig? The service provider?
The new provider bought out our current provider, and they want us to upgrade, and it's, it's a good upgrade, I think, I think people.
But the service provider is providing web hosting services. Is that what I'm getting?
Web hosting services and the actual platform that the website is constructed upon. The new website is very user-friendly in the fact that departments can make edits to their page pretty easily.
I hate to interrupt you guys, but I have to leave. I'm maxed out, so you guys could adjourn.
No problem. I make a motion to adjourn.
No, you don't have to. You guys could.
Okay, get out of here.
Good to see you.
I'm good.
If anyone has questions, come to my office. I don't think we need to stay any later tonight.
Well, we still have to adjourn officially.
I second.
There you go.
So I guess I'm taking over. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Richard?
Aye.
Chris? And Connor? You, aye, do you agree to adjourn?
Sure, yes, aye.
But we want you.
I introduce Connor.
I know. He came in. Nice to meet you. What's your last name?